Thank you, I got the thumbs up, so we will now move into our, as I said, our committee of the whole. Uh, is there any declaration regarding any item on this agenda? Seeing none, if one should arise, make us aware of it. Uh, any business arising, I don't believe we have any. Delegations, our first delegation is from the Grey Bruce Health Services, uh, Amy McKinnon is here to talk about the good work they're doing, so Amy, welcome. Oh, we also have, well, I'll let, I'll let Amy introduce her guests.
Good morning, thank you, Warden and councillors, my name's Amy McKinnon, I'm the CEO of the Owen Sound Regional Hospital Foundation, and I have two of my colleagues with me. Gary Sims, who's the CEO of Grey Bruce Health Services, and Naomi Vaden, who's the Director of Mental Health and Addiction Services at Grey Bruce Health Services. In the community, uh, safety and wellbeing planning for the municipalities of Bruce and Gray, the number one priority identified was for addiction and substance abuse, and the number two priority was mental health. And we're here today to talk to you about some activity that's very exciting activity happening at Grey Bruce Health Services. That's going to transform the way addictions and mental health is treated, not only in our community, but it's going to be the model of care for all Ontarians. So I'm going to hand it over to Gary.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you for letting me speak to you today. I'll speak briefly because the experts behind me. Here's what I know. I'm wrapping up my forty-fifth year in healthcare this year, and in that time, I've seen mental health change in so many different ways, from massive institutional structures to putting people out into the community and then not having the resources there to really manage the crisis that occurs on the street. To what we see today, which is a post pandemic, pandemic of its own, quite frankly. The crisis that we're seeing with mental health and addiction spreading and growing, and to, I mean, I would tell you, I don't think I've done enough in my career, I've done many good things, I think, but not enough for mental health, so I'm very proud to be able to stand before you today. And somewhat apologetic in that it's taken so long to be able to get something that is this ingenious in its place. Mental health has suffered from a rotating door syndrome for way, way, way too long, where a person hits the emerge in crisis. Gets turned around fairly quickly, put right back on the street, and the result is they're putting an environment that gets them unsafe and gets them right back into trouble again. And I feel in a way somewhat responsible for the last couple of years while we've been developing this, we've had to do it in somewhat secrecy, and we, that was not purposeful. It actually involves four ministries, and for the first time trying to navigate between the ministries to create what we have created. Was no easy task, uh, many thanks to Minister Taborla, who is the Deputy Minister of Mental, of Mental Health. Who supported this throughout this process and is quite frankly, uh, wrote his PhD on this subject matter. This model is the first of its kind in Canada. And Naomi will speak to the intricacies, but you'll see a big difference there is that it has transitional beds in place that allow us for housing people and treating people for up to two years. That's non-existent at this point, and it's a key factor in the success of the program. Along with wrapping around it, all of the things that I am, and will speak to you about, and understanding that mental health and addictions can't be cured. It's a journey. And so, you know, I apologize that you probably haven't heard a lot about this, but it was kept in somewhat close quarters because it required that navigation between the ministries, it wasn't meant to hide anything from the community. Or, or in any way deceive anyone, it was more to try to, how to figure out how to do something that involves social services. Ministry of Education, Ministry of Health, and the Ministry of Mental Health. So we eventually were able to work within one ministry, and I'm sure you can all appreciate trying to work through those levels of bureaucratic structure is extremely complex. And add to that the capital branch, which can sometimes take up to ten years to approve something. It was a battle for a couple of years, so we're really pleased to be here in front of you today. And to talk about what the program is, and we'll happily answer questions after the fact, so thank you.
Hello, I, I'm going to bring this down, I've, you have the slides in front of you, so I'm not going to go through all the slides. And some of you, we, who were part of the, the Gray County Task Force on Mental Health and Addictions will have heard me speak there. Where I did a presentation on our model and our, our goals with this project. So let's see if I can figure this out. So really what's unique about this project is that we are moving our, our existing withdrawal management into this building. And we will have some medical detox beds, we will have some relapse prevention beds. And we will, as Gary mentioned, have some short-term housing units, kind of up to two years where people receive treatment. So often people come into our program and then they're discharged, and they're back into a community, maybe couch surfing in someone's house that is using substances, and so it's really, really hard to, to maintain sobriety when you have that around you, so by having these seventeen beds, uh, which I'm going to show you on the, the, one of the upcoming slides. We're really hopeful that we can help people have a safe environment to continue their, the program. So the, the other thing unique about this program is that it's OHIP-funded. There is some really great programs that are, are in Ontario, but they're generally fee-for-service. And so we know that a lot of the individuals that live in Grey Bruce need, um, need a, a OHIP-funded program. So that's one unique element of this program. The other thing is, is that when you attend a program in, um, in an addiction program, you have to go through a series of assessments and screeners, and then you're accepted, and then you're put on a waitlist. And I think any of you know that when the crisis hits, you might be ready to, to access services, but to wait three months, six months, a year for to, to go to services, usually, um, people drop away in their interest. So we have a variety of inpatient and outpatient programs. So the idea is that even if we don't have a bed right away, we have walk-in, that we have groups, we have support right in the facility. We acknowledge that people are at different stages of change, and so some are ready to go in treatment and some are not quite ready. But we still want to provide them service, it might be a cooking group, it might be a vocational group. But it's a way to engage with someone who's not quite ready. And with the hopes that then they will attend our treatment program. So I'll slide here, um, just to let you know, so it's at the Bayview School, the old Bayview School. And so it's got beautiful grounds, and our goal is to work with our community members on making a greenhouse and making walking trails, and really quite lovely. But that's stage two, um, so we'll, we'll get there, but I know a lot of community members are really interested in developing this. We come from a recovery orientation, so we believe that change can happen, we can, we believe that sometimes it takes many, many tries. As Gary mentioned, addictions is a chronic illness, so we do know that one time through doesn't mean that you're recovered, but by having this, this opportunity for outpatients and inpatients coming into social rec groups, vocational groups into treatment keeps people connected to us while they work through, uh, to the stage where they're really ready for treatment. So this is, this drawing is really just a quick way to show you that you can come in through the merge, you can come in through outpatient programs, you can come in through EMS into the detox and then go through treatment, relapse prevention, and then into one of the supportive studios. Or alternatively, that purple circle just shows you can just come in and walk in and attend groups that, that as I already mentioned, that may not be directly related to addictions and mental health. Really just a way to engage with people in hopes that they might then, uh, follow that more fulsome client journey. So the program's all under one roof, so the yellow section on the, on the right as we're looking at is the more traditional withdrawal management and detox beds and relapse prevention, so where we have a beautiful, um, team nursing state, I, I say team station because it's social work and nursing, it's not just a nursing station. But it's a way that we can really have good eyes on people who are detoxing from alcohol, substance, opiates. Um, and then we have relapsed prevention beds, the middle air bluish area is offices, we're moving our act team and our case management teams into this facility. Appreciating that we need to provide more support for those clients that are, um, struggling with addictions and mental health issues in the community. And we have our rapid access addiction medicine clinic also situated in that blue area. Our nurse practitioners as long, as well as our psychiatrists will be in that space. We will have drop-in nurse practitioner clinics here for people that are part of our, our program, as we know. Our clients very typically are the last picked up from our family doctors, they're complex patients, and we appreciate that. Um, and so having a nurse practitioner onsite to do walk-in clinics, we think will be a really added bonus to our community. The green area at the back, or the north, I think I just whipped something off here, I did, okay. Is the supportive studios, and those supportive studios are for one to two years. That, again, that period of stability, the little purple area is a four-bed mini unit. And that four-bed mini unit, uh, we are working with our community partners on really high-risk individuals, so people with a developmental disability, people and a mental illness and an addiction who need that twenty-four-seven care for long periods of time. So it's got four rooms with, uh, separate each, uh, having their own washroom, and then a communal kitchen dining room area and a, and a little balcony, a little porch area as well. And then to the left is where the bulk of our outpatient programs will be, we have a beautiful kitchen dining room, we'll be doing supportive vocational training, so we might, uh, do workshops on, um, you know, serving and cooking. And, uh, because we know our, our local, um, businesses such as Tim Hortons and the like are really struggling, so we're going to really do some, some training. So that, that, uh, not only do people have an option for employment, but our community also gets much-needed workforce. And then we have computer rooms and, uh, and a variety of other vocational rooms. Not have all the staff yet to run all those vocational rooms, but we're really working with our partners on, um, developing that. So through this program, we have, uh, counselling, we have, you can go through all the programs here, but we have counselling, we have case management, we have trauma counselling, we have addiction medicine. And case management, medication delivery, we have quite, quite an extensive, uh, program for our clients that will be attending this program. And I don't know that I need to go too much into the stats because I know you're all very well aware of the need in this area and how really striking the substance use and mental health issues have been since the pandemic. So we're really, really excited and hopeful for this project to come to its fruition. And, uh, just one, uh, additional add is that, uh, we have been really working closely with our Indigenous partners on the model of care, just to make sure that it is a very culturally safe and aware, uh, program and facility. So I'll let Amy take over.
So it seems obvious to many of us that all these programs should be under one roof, but this is really transformational, really groundbreaking to what's happening in Ontario and in Canada, in fact, so, um, something Naomi didn't mention, but she did mention that it's OHIP-funded, so theoretically it is open to all Ontarians, but Naomi and her team are, are working on a well-managed, robust triage system to give priority to our community members here in Grey Bruce, that they'll give priority to getting the beds. The total cost of the project is about twenty-five million dollars, Grey, uh, Grey Bruce Services has ten already for the project, and we're looking to raise fifteen million for the community. This facility is hoping to be open this year. Fall, hopefully this fall, um, so we're here today to ask council to please consider an investment of a million dollars in this very important project. And we'd be happy to answer questions.
Are there any, uh, thank you very much, Naomi, uh, Gary and Amy, thank you very much for your presentation, are there any questions from county council? Councillor Dickert.
Thank you, Warden Millen, thank you to our presenters here this morning, that is certainly something that I, you know, have thought of for many years that we needed, uh, my time with Police Services Board and with the Hospital Board has certainly highlighted the needs of the community, and, uh, I think it's, it's overdue, and I congratulate you on your work, and I certainly, uh, you know, on a personal, I have a daughter that serves as a police officer, so she's certainly able to share many stories of, of the need that, uh, that she sees through her daily, uh, operations, and, uh, I, I certainly support the county taking part in this in some way, I, I know we need to look to staff to see what kind of financing we might be able to come up with, but, uh, uh, just want to give my support that we do look at that and, uh, help any way we can to get this service available to us, thank you.
Thank you, Warren, and maybe I'll ask, before we get any more questions, I'll ask Kim to, uh, remind everyone what our policy is on healthcare funding.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, council, um, for, especially for those of you who are new to county council this term. In, um, November of twenty-twenty-one, um, council, uh, adopted the, um, healthcare funding policy. And this policy was in recognition of the requirement for, um, health organizations such as GBHS to, uh, raise a portion of their capital funding from the community. That's simply a requirement from the province that this happens. And so at that time, we considered this carefully, and that is, um, where the resolution was taken, that we would be putting some funds away in reserve each year, um, towards, uh, ensuring that we had available resources to fulfill these requests when they're made. Under the funding policy, um, any capital, um, requests would come to county council before the June of each year for consideration in the future years, um, budget, so I, I would suggest, um, if, uh, if council so wishes, we might, uh, bring forward a staff report to a future meeting that talked about, um, the policy and, and how, how we might be able to address GB, GBH's request. So I, I'll put that on the table also while I have the floor. I can't say enough about the partnership that we've developed with GBHS. Um, they're absolutely integral to the SOS program that's working out there on the street all the time. And, um, the work that they do with Anne-Marie and her team, so, you know, thank you to you, Naomi, and to all of your staff, it's, it's tremendous, and it's so important, so thanks.
Thank you, Kim, uh, councillor Greg, and then I'll go to Mattressoff.
Thank you, Warden Millen, and, uh, thank you, Amy, Naomi, Naomi and Gary. Particularly, I just wanted to note, Naomi, thank you to your team, uh, for the communication that you've been conducting with the community, uh, particularly individuals that, uh, live in pretty close proximity, uh, who are somewhat surprised, uh, to, to learn of this initiative in their, in their neighborhood, so as an Old Town councillor, uh, we certainly became very familiar with residents' concerns very quickly. Uh, but this is a, an initiative, uh, which is going to, uh, be tremendous. Hopefully, uh, also speed up the exit of our paramedics, uh, from the emergency department when they're responding, uh, frequently up there and tying up a lot of time. As well as all the peripheral benefits to, um, you know, getting people ready to get back into the community. I, I will, uh, at, uh, at this time, I'll put a motion out there though that we just received, uh, the deputation for information purposes. It's, you know, financing health is, is something that's an endeavor of the federal government and the provincial government. We have, uh, probably every one of our directors, uh, seated at this meeting today could go over a ten-year capital forecast and asset management and speak about how underfunded we are uh, in our own tenure, uh, asset management replacement, so we have our own challenges. And we have to recognize those as well, uh, so I'll put a motion on the floor that we receive the deputation for information.
Okay, thank you, is there a second here for that motion, councillor Mattressoff, and you wish to speak as well, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, through the warden, thank you very much for the presentation, uh, not just for, for our benefit, but for every community that's tuning in and watching as well. I think creating the awareness of how things have evolved and that the new method of practice is really valuable. My question through the warden is, is where can we and members of our, our communities find the comparative in terms of the economic sustainability, so the social, social cultural sustainability is a slam dunk. But in order for us to be able to look at and reflect a report that's going to come through, one of the questions I can anticipate is, okay, so the ask is for a million dollars. But how much of that are we, will, will come back to us, if the fact that the person doesn't need to have a third visit to EMS, because now they've actually got a different route to go. What is that saving us, the number of paramedic visits or the time, as, as councillor Greg said, how long they need. Now they have their, the assurance that that person is going to be handed over into a very, um, very, uh, cutting-edge program. So how can we add those numbers up and compare them against the million-dollar request?
That's a million-dollar question in itself, I'm sure. Would either of you like to respond to that, or? Okay.
So because the model is the first of its kind in Canada, I can tell you, in Europe, where the model does work, it has shown to be effective. And if council would like some of that data, I can certainly ask Minister Taborla to provide that information, probably with some kind of in-depth review as to why the program does work and how we measure it, it's one of the few programs that's being put in place and measured. What I will tell you is, if you don't act and we don't do it, this problem gets worse and you have more deaths on your hands, so I don't have a choice but to do it, regardless of whether people think it should or shouldn't be supported. Lives are at stake, and you see it every day, the ambulance guys, the police see it, fire see it. And you saw it in the pandemic. So you know, I don't know what measure you use, what is a life worth? But we see it as necessary in more than a dollar value, so you know, that's the way, that's the only answer I can really give you, thanks.
Yeah, that's, oh, okay, go ahead.
Um, I'm just going to add, just thinking quickly here around emerge, repeat visits, that's an easy metric and cost that we can calculate. Um, and then short-term housing costs, certainly, uh, Gray County could probably quite easily calculate those compared to what they picked last year to this year. Or when the program's opening, I, I think there is some pretty, um, hard numbers to cat, to, to not catch, but there is some that we could, we could, uh, we, we could quite easily calculate, I think.
Yeah, indeed, any, any, uh, financial data is helpful, councillor Boddy, and then we're here.
Thank you, uh, Warden Millen. Um, I, I remind council that last term we had a, uh, on sound handover task force that looked at these types of things. We are your catchment area for people that need help from all over Gray and Bruce, they come to On Sound because we've got the treatment now, we've got the buildings next door that treat to the best they can with limited numbers. Um, methadone treatment center, those types of things that are here, and if there's anybody around Gray and Bruce that wants a methadone treatment center, wants any of these treatment centers, and their, uh, their municipalities will be happy to, uh, to share them, but the reality is, they're here, they attract people. When people are ODing, ODing and having mental health issues, and, uh, I maybe shouldn't say, and, I should put a slash in there because they really go together. Our police are often the ones in On Sound that pick up these people and are responsible for getting them to the, uh, to the hospital where they go into emergency. Our police officers are standing there for hours while they get treated, meanwhile, there's emergency staff at the hospital that are dealing with these people that could be dealing with, should be dealing with, trying to deal with a wide array of other emergencies that have come in there at the same time, and it makes sense that, uh, without being able to put a dollar value on that, I don't know how they're ever going to figure out in the emergency room, the dollar value to figure out what they're, uh, dealing with for a, a mental health, uh, addiction, uh, emergency versus, uh, a non-mental health, clearly this is, uh, needed, uh, clearly it's important, um. We, we probably got worse in, in the North American community during COVID for people with addictions and, uh, people that were working marginally in low-paying jobs that lost those things and the, and the wheels fell off altogether. It will take us a long time to get out of that, um, I, I don't see where, uh, people that are dealing in, uh, in, in, uh, fentanyl and those types of things plan to pack their bags and quit practicing in that business, we're going to be dealing with this, uh, for a long time, so the need is absolutely there, we do have a plan to deal with capital, this appears to be capital, but I do have a couple of questions, uh, just for, for clarity, I think Naomi said there's going to be seventeen beds, if, if I'm not mistaken. Back in April first, twenty-twenty-two, we did a, a, a video conference with, um, uh, then Associate Minister of Mental Health and Addictions, Michael Tobolo. He announced approval of thirty-six new beds and six million dollars effective immediately. Uh, at that point, we already had twenty-one beds, I believe, next door, but only nine were provincially funded. Uh, there is a new provincial addictions recovery fund, so a question is going to be, is that capital or is that operational? Is, uh, paying for fourteen more addiction treatment beds, twelve withdrawal management beds, and ten supportive treatment beds. So that adds up to more than seventeen, and I think they're talking about a new forty-five-bed facility. Uh, how many beds are we really talking about, and, uh, how much? Well, I guess you already showed what the capital, uh, is going to be in the neighborhood of, uh, ten million dollars, uh, how does that all break down? Were the, will there be enough funding, and this is maybe Andrea's question or the edge, but will there be enough funding going forward to operate it once the building is completed? Uh, as far as the operations and providing the services go, and I think that's ninety-seven questions wrapped up into one, thanks.
Uh, thanks for the question. There is actually forty-five beds in total, so nine existing, adding thirty-six new beds. The seventeen are the long-term transitional supportive units. So there are, there are multiple beds within the, there's actually, did you count the four bit, the four, you will diagnose?
Yeah, forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, so there are forty-five in total, we are funded for the operations going forward to our base forever. So we have the funds to run it, the capital is twenty-six, it's about twenty-six million, actually, it says twenty-five, but there's been a few changes. Uh, we are putting ten million in from the hospital, and then we're trying to raise the other, whatever amount we can raise will go towards the capital of the building and the renovation, of course. Uh, the reality for us is regardless of whether we raise the money or not, we'll borrow the money, and we'll have to pay out of operations to keep that going. We do expect and have been told that there is a second phase that is, you heard Naomi speak to it quickly there. Uh, there's a second phase of investment that the ministry is willing to do once we're up and running. That would expand to, uh, expanded programs in vocational training, education, support structures, hopefully being able to bring on our community partners, see, um, I'm going to say the wrong, CMHA, uh, we're, we're originally, and so like, we're supposed to be in partners with this from the beginning, uh, they could not provide staff to do so, so we've used our existing staff plus what the additional funding is to staff it. But in the second phase, it's our hope that we can bring those partners in, and they will be part of the building as well, so it'll be a multi-partnership, fully funded operationally uh, through the Ministry of Health.
Just, just to follow up, my, I should have asked this before. Does the, uh, the, the hospital, does the corporation own this building, or is it like owned by somebody private that's, that's a rental?
I'm on now, good, uh, yeah, we will own it, yeah, becomes our asset.
Okay, I'm going to give the last question to councillor Ackles, we're, we're, I mean, we're, we're having the debate now whether we're going to support this or not, and, and we're a little premature there, but I, I think we can all agree that this is a, a, a good, um, proposal to debate about whether we're going to support it or not, but uh, I, I, I don't want to drag this on too long, councillor Ackles.
So you don't want to drag this on too long, so you give me the last comment?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you're, uh, quickly, in the last slide, fifteen patients present with substance use in the EDA emergency department per day across Grey Bruce. The interesting point that makes it about, uh, quick maths, somewhere around fifty-five hundred patients. Realizing that a number of those are cyclical, uh, but there's fifty-five hundred ED per day. But there's fifty five hundred E D per day. The next one was when the caught my eye was eighty admitted in patients receive substance use counseling in the past year. We've had fifty five hundred come in. And it's one of the things sitting on the health unit that, you know, patients are in, and I think Gary, you mentioned it, you know, they're in, get kind of slightly under control and to Mr. Body's point from the policing to the trauma that it creates in the emergency department. If we're going to continue with healthcare for the whole community and whatnot, we've got to find a resolve to this. And thank you very much for revealing that we have this because at the health unit, it's something that's taken up an enormous amount of time from the community health aspect of it. So what we can do, I will be very much in support of it to get not only Gray Bruce Health, but South Bruce Gray, Hanover Hospital and everyone looking at that and from the periphery as well to from Gray and Bruce. But it it certainly is not just in our community, it's across, but maybe we can be the leaders to show the province that there can be some success stories out of this. Thank you for the presentation.
So I should have known he wouldn't have a question. Nonetheless, thank you very much. Great presentation. It was a, yeah, you you did well for a ten minute presentation, but I'm joking. It's it's well, well received and we look forward to debate for supporting the program. Go ahead.
Through you, Warden Millen, my apologies. The resolution on the floor is to receive for information only at this time. The C A O had suggested that a report could come back. Does staff need direction to bring that report back so that we can have further conversation or does this just sit? Thank you.
No, I I believe I understood that the report or the policy is that if you make your presentation prior to June, it will be considered in the next budget cycle. Very good. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We do have a motion on the floor. I was just getting to that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, now the next is we have Joakim Ostertag. I hope I said that right. He is here to give a presentation on the Earth Day Planning Group for this year's Earth Day events. So welcome, Joakim. I think Sarah is going to help.
What am I doing?
Thanks. You're good to go.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for having me here. I want to talk about Earth Day and my name is Joachim Ostertag. And also want to congratulate the health unit for this amazing project because we know we need an intersectional lens in the work we do in addictions and mental health. And also Earth Day is not a mental health issue. We talk about community and community is is also an important part for mental health. So now I need to know how to move this thing forward. So no. No.
Let's try this.
Ah, yeah. So so last year we had the first Earth Day in two thousand twenty two. And some of you might have been here, so you might remember. Yeah, there it is. So that was our poster last year. This is very slow. Oh, there it is. Yeah, so I just kind of give you a bit of an overview of what we did last year before I go to what we do today, this year. So we had a water ceremony with Elder Shirley John, who many of you might know from Sogin First Nations. We had a climate fair at the market with lots of people and great ideas what what everybody can do to 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 reduce our carbon footprint. We had music, entertainment, we had kids activities. The whole, the whole market was, the ground was full of chalk, paintings, drawings, we had dance. We had a parade, the parade. Has anybody been at the parade last year? It was an amazing success. Luckily, the weather was good. We had about seven hundred people there walking around the river. This is one of the councils from South Bruce, I think, Jeffrey Shea, having a, having a discussion with one of our parade leaders. We got the city of Owen Sound most promising new event award. And this year we build on what we did last year. We have new partners, we're big along the public library, the Tom Shearer Individual Initiatives. And we also work more closely with the city of Owen Sound. We had more Earth Day, pre-Earth Day activities. And we also have an Earth Night Film Presentation, so it's not just an Earth Day and I come to that later. Our goals are champion a celebratory, inclusive Earth Day event that energizes us all to take steps towards climate action, including mitigation, adaptation and justice. We often forget about justice when we talk about climate change. So we had pre-Earth Day workshops. Here's one where the youth climate action conference a few weeks ago, which was amazing, we had fifty students who were absolutely eager and keen to 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 learn about climate, climate change, climate emergency. And then the afternoon we had workshops where they where they talked about and explored what each of them can do. You can see those eagle faces here. This is, this was one of the workshops, you might notice Liz Zedlin, who was the workshop leader of that. And the presentations of those workshops will be at the library on Earth Day in the morning at eleven o'clock. We had a mask making workshop like last year, which was based on the seven grandfathers teachings. So the masks were about those. Here you see all kinds of examples. And then we had, we worked with Shira, Shira did some skits for Earth Day, which they will show on the parade. And then we had a poster contest, which was really exciting. And so the poster that won this year was a grade eight student. She won that, a Kabel Sarawak student. And so this is our official poster. And then we have the Earth Night, which I mentioned before, Tuesday, April the eighteenth, seven to nine at the library. We showed two movies, civilians transforming our community. Some of you might have seen that movie before, made by Liz Zedlin and John Anderson. And then the warming stripes weaving the weather was a project by with Anne Schneider, who is a weaver. And that that warming rock that she wolf weaved, she did weave has stripes on it that shows over a hundred and twenty years how the climate has changed. So it's kind of a more creative artistic way to do it. So here they are, John Anderson and Anne. And then on the on Saturday, April the twenty second, that is when we have the event. It starts at the on the other side of the river at the bench with the water ceremony. And then so and at eleven to twelve thirty, we have the exhibition of the youth climate projects, eleven to twelve thirty, Earth Day exhibitions. Twelve forty five is the water ceremony I just mentioned. Two to five, that's kind of the main event at the market with all the different shows and activities. And at three thirty to four o'clock, we start the farm at the parade at the farmers market. So again, this is Shirley John, twelve forty five. Would be really great to see you there. It's it's quite a, quite, quite a, quite an event. With all kinds of children's activities, puppet theater and so on and so on, things about greener living, live music. Again, kids kids activities, storytelling with puppets, the 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 earth alternative activities at the farmers market. And then energies, some ideas about retrofits that people can do. So it's all about what we can do different, how to grow things. And then you have dancing again, somebody bought last year and will bring it again, his, his homemade electric tractor. It's an E T and E tractor. Then we have the parade. We have a closing ceremony at four forty five. And I hope that you help us make this a great community building event again. Don't miss it. Okay. I tried to do this fast because I know you have a have a huge attendant. If any questions or any comments about it?
Thank you, sir. There's a lot going on, that's for sure. Any questions from council? Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Warden Millen, and thank you for the presentation today, Yocum. You presented to On Sound Council at our last meeting and certainly I was satisfied or happy to see our city managers and our climate team at the city is leading a bit of an initiative next week and perhaps something that corporately here we would like to promote as well as our municipal members around the table. But we're certainly communicating to staff and promoting using public transit or app active transportation, cycling, walking to work all through next week. And we're running a little bit of a a prizing program within the city just to reward participation. So I think it's a great little initiative and perhaps something that can be considered here and just consider at the end of the week, the actual climate change impact that cumulatively we we can create together, just even in that one week by making wise choices. Thanks for being here today.
Yeah, and it also fits very well into the making gray green again, green again, gray context. It's a great title, which I don't get right yet. But we always think of that context. And also Owen Sound will have a presentation, we'll have a table at at the market on the day to present their climate action strategies. Anything else?
Lynn, I see our climate manager Linda here. Linda, do you want to make a comment or?
Mostly just to really celebrate the great work that is happening with the Earth Day group. Gray County had a table last year at the Climate Fair and it was just such a successful event. We connected with hundreds of people. That was just as we had launched Going Green and Gray. So we were able to share the information in that plan. We will have a table again this year. So again, we'll be sharing information about the plan, providing folks with again sort of those tips for the actions they can take, enabling them to sign up for our climate newsletter. So one of the things the plan really emphasizes is the essential nature of community involvement and support. So we aren't going to be able to do what we need to do as a county without the work of organizations like this. So we're very grateful and appreciative of the efforts that you're putting in.
Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Any other questions? Counselor Ackles?
Just a couple of points of clarification. You mentioned Jeffrey Shea, he's not from South Bruce, he is a Gray County resident, he's a member of West Gray Council. So just put that one out there for you to get him corrected. Ah, no, we, I won't go any further. The other point is April eighteenth, don't be offended if I can't be there. If you were here earlier enough, you'll know that I'll be in Toronto. Been summoned to go to Toronto to vote for one of our fellow candidates at the Good Roads Convention, so. Well, the meeting, yes, the big, the big part, and we'll be there on the twenty second, but that part on the eighteenth. Yeah, we may be absent as we're all going to be supporting Mr. McKay. Yeah, I caught that part. Thanks, Derek.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying where you're going to be for the next little while, Counselor Ackles. Any other questions regarding the presentation? Okay, well, thank you very much, Joakim. It's a great presentation and we look forward to the event. Thank you. Our next presentation is from Genevieve Scott. She's here from Quest of Planning. She's going to give us a verbal presentation on the one of the subdivisions that she's working on. Welcome, Genevieve.
Good. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Good, good morning, members of committee and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Genevieve Scott from Quest of Planning and we were retained by Dr. Shahabi and his wife to assist him in the preparation and processing of a draft plan of subdivision. The subdivision is a small infill development which will result in taking two existing lots and redeveloping them into six residential lots. All of the proposed lots meet or exceed the relevance owning provisions, so an amending bylaw was not required of this proposal. As a condition of approval, the township had requested that the county planning staff include a condition that a six meter wide block of land be dedicated to the township between the proposed lots one and two for drainage purposes and to provide an access lane for township vehicles as well as for pedestrian access purposes. We are requesting a modification to the conditions of draft approval, which would provide for a six meter wide drainage easement rather than a dedicated block at this location. The easement option was suggested by the Public Works at the time of pre-submission consultation. And we would like to to go ahead with the easement rather than a block. The easement approach was also supported by the project engineer and the peer reviewer. At at this location, there are actually no existing drainage conditions currently. And so the request for the easement is for future drainage purposes. And it really reflects a cautionary approach rather than a need that's necessary at this time. So just before I get into my discussion points, I would like to thank Mr. Taylor for his assistance in resolving one of our original concerns or my client's original concerns with the block proposal, which was who would be responsible for installation costs of any future infrastructure. As the the future drain is not required by the proposal and is for the benefit of the township only, it was eventually agreed among the planners that the township would be responsible for installation of any drainage infrastructure as well as any costs associated with that. So we're very happy with that progress that we were, that we made in that regard. However, my client does still have some outstanding concerns related to the request for a block versus an easement. Mr. Taylor's report indicates that based on his discussion with the former township planner, he is of the opinion that the primary function of the block would be for a future culvert for drainage and a future laneway for shore road allowance remediation purposes. In this regard, I would have to respectfully disagree with with Mr. Taylor. Based based on the history of the file, we feel that the primary function of the block is to provide additional pedestrian access to the shore road allowance where there's already sufficient public access. Quite frankly, it's probably the best access in the township. Cottage Lane is just south of this area and provides direct access to the shore road allowance for pedestrian, for pedestrians. And my client is concerned that creation of further access will very likely increase some existing land use compatibility issues. So our position really stems from some correspondence from the township. When the dedicated block was requested instead of the easement, and this was to provide a culvert, which would then allow the creation of a paved walkway with black chain link fencing. So the original, the original comments from the town township requested the culvert and a paved walkway with fencing. At this time, there was no mention of the vehicular access. This option was developed a little later on to provide some further rationale for the block request. The request for the culvert was not based on the peer review comments related to drainage. The peer reviewers had no concerns with the easement and swale approach. The request for the pedestrian access does seem to be based on public comments received during the Planning Act process. During the process, one public comment had requested that the proposed lot one be removed from the draft planned lands to provide for open space and public access across the site at this location. Historically, some residents in the area had been accessing the shore road allowance by crossing my clients' lands at the previous owner's permission as they were on friendly terms. So this public comment essentially requested that the county can allow this practice to continue by removing one of the proposed lots. But I think it's important to note that there are two existing legal access points in proximity to this location. And public access will not be affected by this proposal. With respect to the culvert itself, there really is no engineering rationale to install a culvert at this location, although it would make installing a walkway or a laneway more feasible. Both the project engineer and peer reviewer agreed that a swale is sufficient at the location as there's no drainage concern at this point in time. I don't imagine that if and when the time comes for including stormwater infrastructure at this location that a culvert would be necessary. It's a fairly costly exercise compared to installing a swale and a swale would be sufficient. In discussions with former public work staff, it's my understanding that easements have been employed quite on a regular basis all over the township for many years with no issues. So we do prefer this approach. With respect to remediation of the shore road allowance and the need for a lane, there really is no need or rationale that I can tell. And there's little to no remediation required at this location compared to any other section of shore road allowance where historical encroachments may exist. There's also no plan for remediation. Respectfully, it doesn't seem realistic that the township would be making significant effort or spending large sums of money in an area of shore road allowance that is currently in good shape and easily walkable. These works could also trigger an environmental assessment process and the shore road allowance lands are under land claim currently. That being said, should the township want to move ahead with some minor works to improve this area, which really would essentially be removal of some old fencing and possibly installation of signage. My client is open to sharing costs associated with that work and providing temporary access across its lands. Ultimately, the primary issue here is one of land use compatibility. This is the main concern of my client and for the future residents at this location. The county plan does encourage public access to waterfront. However, the policy specifically encourages it in locations where there's infrastructure such as garbage disposal, washrooms and boat launching facilities. In this case, this is a location where the public access will be directly adjacent to private amenity space. There are existing land use compatibility and trespassing issues at this location. And we feel that further access will exacerbate these issues. Because this was historically a resort use, the infrastructure at the site, for better or for worse, does invite these types of issues. If a block is dedicated and used for public access, there's little doubt that this area will be treated by the general public, really as a park area. Again, this is going to lead to compatibility issues with the new residents living adjacent to the shore road allowance. And there's questions as to how parking, loitering and noise complaints will be dealt with. My client does accept the status quo at this location, simply doesn't want any more compatibility issues down the road. We therefore respectfully request the committee endorse our request to modify Condition One. The draft plan would then reference an easement for drainage purposes rather than a dedicated block. The easement approach has been accepted by the peer reviewer, would alleviate my client's outstanding concern and would result in no negative impact on existing pedestrian access to the shore. We would like to avoid an appeal on this matter or abandonment of the proposal. Neither of these options would benefit anyone. We don't want a costly hearing and we don't want any loss of fees or assessments to the township. As an aside, once the land claim is resolved, it's my opinion that the township, you know, should consider absolving themselves of responsibility of the shore road allowance nearby and at this location. They could, through the sale of these lands to the abutting landowners, this option would clear the township of liability issues, avoid future costs associated with remediation or maintenance and will resolve existing future and existing land use compatibility issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Genevieve. I would ask for any questions of clarity, although council will know that there is a report from Scott Taylor to precisely two minutes to lunch, seven A with regards to this issue. Sorry, a little inside joke there. But so I would encourage debate at that point, the merits of whether an easement versus a with a block versus a block. But I would encourage questions for clarity at this point while we have Genevieve here, if there are any. Not seeing any? You must have done a really good job. Everybody understands it. Thank you very much, Genevieve. Appreciate your time. So it is now five after eleven. Why don't we recess for a few minutes and well, let's come back quarter past the hour and we'll continue with our meeting. If the delegation from West Gray would find their chairs, we'd get back to business here. Oh, no apologies necessary. All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order. The next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone require any of those items? And there are several there removed for further discussion. Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you, Warden. I would like to pull for a point of clarification and a question to my colleagues for item, sorry, was there? The Agriculture Advisory Committee report, I believe it's Item G. Thank you.
Okay, any others? So I'd seek a motion to adopt and receive those items. Save and accept for G, moved by Counselor Nielsen, second by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving along, well, it's not two minutes to twelve, but nonetheless. Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to come forward, we have a report there on the Shahabi and I thank Genevieve for helping me pronounce that. Subdivision. If someone would move receiving of that, Counselor Keveney, Counselor Hutchison, Scott, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning to the Warden and members of council on those tuning in today. So I'll try to keep this somewhat brief, but I know you all take that with a grain of salt when I say that anyway, so. So what we have before us is a proposed subdivision, as Genevieve has highlighted, for six new lots and potentially one block in the township of Georgian Bluffs. And so the lands are about 1.6 hectares in size. You see them there highlighted in yellow. They're about half a kilometer south of East Linton and about one and a half kilometers north of Baumie Beach, just to orient yourself. As you can see from that air photo, most of the shoreline in the stretch of Georgian Bluffs is already developed. The notable exceptions are the properties you see in yellow and the property immediately to the south there. As Genevieve has mentioned, this property has a really interesting history and some of which is still found on site and on the Shoreline Road allowance. There was a former resort here and there was a pool and tennis courts and cottages and various outbuildings and everything else. So it's a neat walk back into the history of the area for those that have been lucky enough to be on the site. Staff are considering this an infill development because, as I said, most of the rest of the shoreline is already developed. The lands are in the designated inland lakes and shoreline settlement area in the county official plan. As I believe Genevieve mentioned, the lands will be serviced by municipal water and private individual septic systems. There is no wastewater treatment immediately in the vicinity of this development. There were no planning applications required from Georgian Bluffs here. The lands are already zoned shoreline residential and they meet the provisions of that zone in this regard. And really at stake here, one of the key points we're talking about today is that access block, but we'll get to that in just a second. So what you have is the map that Genevieve showed. You'll see kind of if we consider south to be down on this map, you'll see Baumie Beach Road along the south there. The lot sort of sandwiched in the middle of the road and the former Shoreline Road allowance there. And so in this case, the future lot owners wouldn't own all the way to the waterfront. There is that Shoreline Road allowance that remains in public ownership. And then as Genevieve noted in her presentation, you'll see the proposed block between lots one and two in that regard. There were comments from both agencies and the public on this one. There were questions about the balancing of the common good and the protection of the environment with the need for development lands. There were questions about hazard lands and drainage and water pooling in the area. As Ms. Scott mentioned, there was a public comment about maybe not developing on Lot One and leaving that as open space. Questions about the impact on wildlife and the environment. And then there was also some questions about access to the shoreline and the servicing of the proposed development. I will say that township staff and county staff worked closely with agencies such as the Conservation Authority, also worked with a peer reviewer to look at the technical aspects of this one. The Conservation Authority reviewed this one largely before Bill twenty-three came into effect. So at that time, they were reviewing both the natural heritage and the natural hazard. They are satisfied from a natural hazard perspective. And there was an environmental impact study done from a natural heritage perspective. There's a series of draft plan conditions here that look to cover off some of those detailed recommendations of the peer reviewer as well as some of the recommendations from township staff, county staff, the Conservation Authority and the various utilities and agencies in this regard. Certainly, while we respect the public's comments here with respect to that need to balance, we do also acknowledge that these lands were designated for development, they're zoned for development. And that's what's coming forward through this plan of subdivision. As I noted, there's no municipal applications or no township applications accompanying this one because of the existing zoning already being in place. Based on our review, we consider the proposed subdivision to have regard for matters of parental interest under the Planning Act, be consistent with the parental policy statement and conform to both the township and county official plan in that regard. Now, more specifically, with respect to the matter that Ms. Scott briefed us on, this is Block One, as you can see on the map there. There is a lengthy discussion on this in the report. I'll just go over some of the highlights. As Genevieve mentioned, when this was first presented to Township Council back in September of 2022, Ms. Scott also provided a deputation at that time with respect to a few matters. One of them was the drainage and the other was the need for the block versus the easement and access in that regard. We've worked collectively between township staff, who have been fantastic to work with, and Ms. Scott and her client, who have also been great to work with, to try to resolve the matter to the extent feasible. At a certain point, we got to a sort of an agree to disagree standpoint, and that's where we are today in front of council. So as Ms. Scott mentioned, there was some some comments made from the township to suggest that, no, they're not looking for her client to install that culvert there. The lands, as she mentioned, aren't needed for the drainage of this property. They're needed for the drainage of some of the surrounding properties. So any further improvements in that easement or block would be the township's requirements in that regard. So my understanding is that has eased some of her client's concerns in that regard. But the main concern still relates to the necessity for this block. With respect to the county perspective on this, as she mentioned, our plan does promote public access to the waterfront. There's a number of municipalities in Gray that have worked hard to try to either maintain that public access or in some cases even buy back that public access. And as council will appreciate, we're not making any new waterfront. And if you get into a situation where you have to try to acquire those lands after the fact, it does get quite expensive. The county plan, as I said, promotes this. It's not directive in terms of applying very specific policies to say, you know, this much access or this type of access or anything else. Those details are generally left to the municipalities with that access. With respect to what I understand to be the township's perspective, they've had reports to their staff and to their council to suggest that there's matters on that Shoreline Road allowance that could cause a hazard and will require cleanup at some point. So apparently there's some areas of exposed rebar and various other matters on the Shoreline Road allowance. The challenge for the township and the county has found itself in this position in the past as well is that sometimes you don't know the extent of that cleanup until you literally start digging. And it's tough for a municipality to suddenly have, say, a capital plan reorganized just because we have development come forward. And we've certainly seen this before in other types of development, particularly where there's gravel pits and there's a need to upgrade township or county roads. You know, you want to do what you can to support development, support aggregate development. But at the same point, a lot of work goes into preparing municipal and county budgets in that regard. And so what Genevieve said, I believe to be true in that there's no definite plan for when these lands will be further assessed or will be cleaned up by the township. But I think the township is doing the right thing in terms of being proactive to try to allow for this access to facilitate that future maintenance and or cleanup. With respect to the access, what I understand from the township is that this would be a gated access, so there wouldn't be unauthorized vehicles coming through this block of land. But township staff have been very clear that these would be public lands and they're not they're not restricting public access. There's already members of the public that use that Shoreline Road allowance. Apparently, it's quite popular for hiking in the area. And this would provide another point of entry to that. Sorry, I'll just go back a bit here. Genevieve mentioned in her presentation Cottage Lane, which you can kind of see in the very south of that. So there are people that pull up Baumie Beach Road and park here and walk up the shoreline along these lands in that regard. With respect to public nuisance or loitering or anything else like that on public lands such as this, you know, the public has every ability to access it. Certainly those future landowners, if the subdivision is approved and the lots are created, could choose to put up fences, could choose to put up fences to further demarcate their property. But quite frankly, we hear it all the time when we have public lands or trails or parks. You know, it's a wonderful amenity for those living in the broader area. But in some cases, those closest neighbors do feel a loss of privacy or do feel some disturbances from having a park pass by their house or a trail in that regard. So, you know, any matters where there's illegal activity happening, obviously, that's a police matter. That's not a planning matter, not something we can do with. But county staff feel that the balance the township staff have provided by suggesting that the block will be gated should provide some deterrence from certain activities happening down there. But no doubt, don't want to sugarcoat anything, there will still be people potentially walking down that that block or walking in behind on the Shoreline Road allowance. That block or or walking in behind on the shoreline road allowance. Uh county staff do see the the um uh the township request here as as reasonable. Um if the township were to look at other options, we would happily explore those options. Um but there have been issues in the past in other municipalities and perhaps in Georgian Bluffs. Uh whereby you had easements and and uh whether it's the first landowner or a second or third landowner. Isn't always aware of of those easements and start make starts making changes on their properties, which can impact uh. Either the ability to access or the drainage in that regard, so we are seeing more and more municipalities say, hey, listen, we don't want the easement. We want to flat out own the lands and and be in charge of it ourselves. Um so I won't belabor the point any further, our recommendation is that the report be received. And that this the draft plan of subdivision be uh a draft approved, but certainly happy to take any questions that council may have in that regard.
Thank you, Scott, and are there any questions regarding this? Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mister Warden, thanks, Scott, for your report. On your photograph, you showed, I think Cottage Lane. Do you know how far it is from Cottage Lane up to where this proposed easement or six meter? So down at the bottom Cottage Lane, what's the distance? Up to where the proposed uh. Subdivision would be? You have any idea?
I I don't have that number off the top of my head, I could run to my computer and check the GIS site and do a quick measurement. It it it's not, it's it's not a huge distance, it it might be, you know, three hundred meters or something. Uh I think some of the concerns with respect to uh um the township uh perspective on potentially. Using Cottage Lane as their vehicular access to then facilitate that shoreline road allowance. Is uh some of these lots in here, um you'd be sort of going through. Yes, you're on the shoreline road allowance, but going through their their backyard areas and uh those are generally grassed areas. Uh so to run heavy equipment up there uh could be destructive or could need further infrastructure upgrades. Uh versus there are hard surfaces along this shoreline road allowance. And so to have the the block right here uh would provide that more immediate access, but certainly. Um you know, Genevieve and I met out on site and and we parked at Cottage Lane. And and it's it's very, very walkable, it it's not a long distance in terms of, you know. From a a public accessibility perspective of of somebody walking. Uh but my understanding is the township doesn't consider these lands great for uh access for heavy equipment in that regard.
Councillor Body.
Uh th- thank you, so this property is the Martins named after the birds, it wasn't really a resort, it was private property owned by the Butchered family. I believe the lane that you're talking about is the gated lane that would go into their private property to the compound. Do you know?
So thank you for your question, Councillor Body, through you, Mister Warden. Um so if you are walking from uh Cottage Lane here, uh there is a little gate, uh I believe roughly right here. Uh and then you walk along the shorefront and and you get to the the development property in question there.
We go, so so this is property that's been uh divided into two parcels, but was originally one parcel. The the road has been there forever that goes across the front of it, people have been using it either by trespassing or with the consent of the owners. And uh over the years, it was. Uh gardens and just beautiful property that they're quite happy to have people come on to. I don't understand why the uh why Georgian Bluffs would have any responsibility to clean up that road or anything along there. There will be a boathouse at the north end that would be on the uh original shore uh road allowance, there would be the. Water pump house would be somewhere around the uh the uh boathouse. The tennis courts would certainly be on the uh on the original road allowance. I have trouble believing that the road itself that is there and has always been there is actually on the road allowance, but it might be. From uh where the front road comes down at Indian River and goes to that next corner. That goes back up to the Baumie Beach Road. So that would be the only place that the road is actually still operating in front of the properties. From there down, there used to be the road allowance that went all the way down and every home along there has privatized it. And uh closed the road so that there isn't any access in front of any of the properties. I suspect that by doing this and trying to keep the original road allowance uh property open for the public. These will be the only lots between uh the old Baumie Beach Front Road and. The East Linton Road, I don't know what else to call it at the north end, every other piece of property along there will be. The road, the original shore road allowance will be. Privatized and only controlled by the property owners. These properties will have access from the back off the road, I assume, just like any of the other lots. I I don't know why we would want to. Continue to allow public access or try to create public access. To the original shore road allowance on these when they won't be anywhere else along there. Uh I wonder why the lower tier would want to maintain any responsibility for any of the works that are on the property. And why that wouldn't be the liability of the uh property owners. I also wonder if uh we continue to allow public access to that original shore road allowance. Depending how the uh Sogina Jibway Nations uh claim to that road allowance shakes out. Who's going to be responsible for paying for, I'm gonna call it the rental, like where is that going to go, who's going to be paying for those? If it is in individual hands, then those individual hands are going to be responsible for paying the rent, paying the cost or the federal government is. Uh if we maintain it as upper tier or lower tier, then it seems to me that we're going to end up in a position of potentially. Potentially ending up in a position that we are liable for uh contributing to Sogina Jibway Nation. Depending how that shakes out, that we may not want that liability. I I I'm closer to Mrs. Scott's and Ms. Scott's uh uh thoughts on uh not. Trying to keep public access open uh and allowing these six lots to have. Their access to the to the shore road allowance in front of it, not. Not get involved with trying to keep it open for public, but those are just my thoughts, just let me. I made some points, I just want to make sure I covered them all, uh public park access right now, I think uh would be. There's some uh just by Indian River, there would be some uh in the parkland across the street from the golf club. And then the next one would be potentially, I guess there's some maybe, no, it's probably private at Cobble. The next one would be Centennial Park halfway around to Big Bay. Unless you're going to try and maintain this and put in a public park, I'm I'm not. Not sure why we'd hold it, those are my thoughts, thanks.
Thank you, sir, Scott, do you want to respond?
Sure, thank you through you, Mister Warden, thank you for those uh comments, Councillor Body, I'm I'm not sure I can address all of them, but I'll try to address a few of them. And if I miss any, feel free to to jump in and correct me. Um with respect to to uh sort of the access and and having those uh shoreline. Uh or or the shorefront roads in in public ownership, it's it's my understanding that. Uh there is a desire from Georgian Bluffs uh for now to to have those and 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 uh. They have identified concerns with those uh with respect to potential liability because people are already accessing them. And so I certainly won't speak for the township, but my understanding is the thought there was that. If we know people are accessing them and we know that that there's potential hazards there. Uh then it might be incumbent on the township to to look at uh at uh cleaning up those hazards. And so I think they wanted to keep their options open uh with respect to um. With respect to maintaining that flexibility in the future. Uh with respect to, you know, whether or not they should or shouldn't be held in 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 public ownership and or. Uh the imp- implications of the future First Nations land claim. I'm not sure I can really comment on on the First Nations land claim in that regard, uh with respect to public ownership. Um I I do know and and we have heard from some of the residents in the area that it is uh quite a popular. Uh you know, walking path right now, uh and and certainly across the county, we see more and more demand for for those types of trails along the waterfront. Um in this case, it it really is a township matter and and certainly if the township wishes to to maintain those. And and keep those in public access, um then that's certainly in line with with our official plan. Uh no doubt, there's lots of areas along the shorefront in in both Georgian Bluffs and other parts of Gray County. Uh where we have had people uh build on the shoreline road allowance and and that's created issues in the past. Uh whereby, you know, people thought they owned the land and and uh and there was disputes over that, uh so you know. As much as possible with the new development, we tried to investigate that, one of the first questions for any new waterfront developer is always. You know, where do you actually own to, do you own to the water or is that still in in municipal ownership in that regard? Uh so that's one of the investigations and certainly if the property to the south were to come forward with development plans. Um that would be one of the the uh the questions we'd ask them to. Um I think that's what I have for now, but certainly if I've missed any of your points, more than happy to uh to respond further.
Any other questions, Councillor Greg?
I guess my only question is a little bit of just clarification for me, so I'm looking at the map. And coming into this morning, I thought a lot of the, and and after listening to Genevieve, I thought a lot of the focus was on Block One. Dedicated to township on the map. Yet I'm hearing a lot of discussion about the unopened road allowance. That abuts the water, obviously, um personally, I thought. I was quite agreeable to her comments about it making sense for an easement rather than a dedicated block, frankly, just about every. Uh person on that. Street or on Baumie Beach Road. If they're already on the water. And they want to use the water, they'll go into their backyard. So it's a little punitive, I thought, for everyone else that may not live on the water. Then to be accessing. That um Block One, uh when an easement would would satisfy the drainage issues. Um can you comment on also? There is two protected. Docks. For for boat purposes, really, on on the map. And there's the creation of six lots, is there any discuss or has there been any discussion about? Uh or is the prospect of uh boat tie-ups something that's been discussed and and influencing or impacting the discussion here? Um because certainly. As it would appear, you could potentially have six lot owners would. Like usage of two protected areas for boating purposes.
Through you, Mister Warden, thank you for your comments, Councillor Greg. Um with respect to access for boating purposes. Um there are draft line conditions that are spelled out in there that there would be uh conditions attached to make each and every future landowner aware. That that they don't own all the way to the waterfront and and they don't have vehicular access to the waterfront. And I think uh respectfully, that's the township really looking to to uh um cover their behinds in that regard. Uh with respect to not ending up in the situations we have in the past where somebody has invested in, you know, major landscaping or 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 major. Uh um you know, building a driveway or or a dock or or something like that. Um so it's my understanding that if if these future landowners were to to uh to look for access there short of any agreement with the township. Uh they would otherwise need to look at uh at a public dock there. Uh with respect to the question of of an easement or a a um a a block there. You know, it's 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 really uh county staff looking to to honor the township's requests there. And and just as as the township wouldn't sort of tell us what to do with our infrastructure, how to maintain that. Certainly, as a non-engineer, it's not my per- not my place to to weigh into the township as to whether or not those same. Uh methods could be achieved by an easement. Uh certainly, I will say, this isn't uncommon, we're seeing other municipalities ask for actually dedicated blocks of lands versus easements because of those. Blurred boundary lines and and sometimes those those easements. Uh you know, become people's gardens or or fence lines or various other things. And then the municipality looks like that the bad person when they're coming in to say, no, no, we need to use that for drainage or access purposes. Um so I I would certainly say that the township's request isn't uncommon, but could we find other places in the county where there's easements uh? For for drainage or access, yes, of course, we could, for sure.
Councillor Carl.
Thank you, Mister Warden, and thank you, Scott, for your report. So Scott has answered pretty much everything well, but I'd like to add. That shoreline remediation, we have no idea what we're gonna have to do there. Um. In settling the land claim on those shore road allowances, we don't know how much cleanup we're gonna have to do there. It does also need to be used for drainage from other properties in the Baumie Beach area, and it makes more sense if we actually own the land. That we're gonna put that drainage through, rather than having somebody landscape their property fully and then we come in and say, oh, no, sorry, we're coming in with big trucks and. So it enables us to do the work that we have to do there and we don't know what will happen with that land claim. Will they decide they want to eventually sell that property to every owner along the way? That will be up to. The indigenous peoples, what happens there. We may be asked though to remediate that land before they take it back, so that means we need access to get onto that shore road allowance. Without disrupting other people's properties. Again, back to the drainage, um. I think that's basically it, the public accesses that go out to there are a little bit north and south. So if somebody comes on at Cottage Lane, they're walking in front of a lot of properties to get to. What's actually probably one of the larger areas of shore road allowance in that area. So I think it makes sense to put people down through there if we're going to allow that as a public access. And because it's township property, it probably does stay as public access. So that's really all I have to add to what uh Scott has said, our biggest thing is we don't know what remediation the township will have to do. And then we don't know when we're gonna fit that into our budget to be able to do it, so I think it's in our best interest to own that piece of land to be able to access it when we need to. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Posed of any? That is carried. Thank you, Scott. And look at that, it's only quarter to twelve. Breezing right along, the next report is regarding Gray Roads Two and Nineteen resurfacing. Would someone care to move that motion uh as on there, councillor uh? Pringle and councillor Hollow, um Atwood. Allwood, sorry, I was close, it's close. Pat, floor is yours.
Thank you, you'll see the map here on the screen uh on um page one nineteen, so that's the area of the uh proposed overlay for this year. So a lot of uh Gray Road Two and Gray Road Nineteen, which currently has one lift of asphalt on it, so this is kind of keeping in our. Asset management uh goal of keeping the good roads good because it's still uh pretty serviceable right now. Uh but it won't be forever if we don't do something, so we're trying to get that second lift of asphalt on there, so. Uh we put the tender out, it's nineteen and a half kilometers, it has paved shoulders as well. Um as far, and there is an overrun or an over, uh it's over budget by about six hundred and seventy-six thousand. Um as far as that goes, it's kind of a combination of of various things, some of the items are a little more expensive than we were anticipating. I think because of fuel still probably, granular is up a bit. Um and the AC, the asphalt cement index, which we include in every contract, is in there as well. Last year, it was very low at this time. Now it's actually quite high, actually dropped last month, I think the first time I've ever seen it drop that I can recall in a long time. Um so it's kind of already built in, last year, you know, some of them came in under under tender and then we end up paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to make up for the price asphalt at the end. Whereas this one, it's over budget, but it's kind of already, uh it's almost like the price is already built in. And a few other little uh issues. Um with our designs, we kind of go based on a similar job from the past. But every job is just slightly different, so when budget comes through, you know, last summer when we were working on some of these designs, the designs aren't complete yet. So little things like tack coat, you don't necessarily use everywhere, it's on certain hills. Um some of the granite or ceiling, you might use somewhere with hills or where you get washouts, but you might not other areas. So we kind of use unit prices comparing job to job, but all the jobs aren't the same, so we realize as we go through the design process. Um our estimating gets more accurate, so. Uh it's, I mean, in general, as a whole, our, it's it's been very good and of course, this makes up for the all the extra money we had last. Two weeks ago, so now some of it's gone again. Um but otherwise, uh really good tender package, there's three bids within about sixty thousand, which you don't see very often on a on a contract this high. Um and we worked with the uh EC King before and we're happy with the work they've done and we're ready to award it to them.
Thank you, Pat, any questions? All those, councillor Apples.
Just on the, on the tender document. Find it, the construction contingency. We didn't have a construction contingency in for the project budget. That we budgeted. Which is usually ten percent, so it's. How's it added in that we end up to six hundred thousand over, because that would be. Quite a bit of the portion that we're over by adding that contingency in, we didn't have that pre-budgeted?
Through you, Mister Warden, yeah, we do have a contingency in our estimates, uh it's just. Sometimes it's a little higher, you know, it could be other factors too. It's farther from some of the asphalt plants. In general, we we discussed this too. Is it? Every time a job comes in over budget, you know, we go through the argument of. Do we delay it? Is there something there that we didn't anticipate that we just delay it for a year? In this case, the unit prices seemed reasonable, although some of them are higher than you expect, maybe. But we don't feel like we're paying a bunch of money that we wouldn't have to pay anyway. If you understand what I mean. So we didn't see any purpose in delaying it. We have, we're on under budget on our first bunch of jobs. It's going to cost us at least. The same or more next year, we figure, because some of the things that come in during the design process. I think the scope is just slightly larger than we wanted. The prices are just a little more than we wanted. Or maybe a lot more than we wanted, but when when you look at a number like three and a half million, it doesn't take, you know. Or two and a half million, those kind of numbers, it doesn't take a lot to. To go a few hundred thousand over budget, so.
Go ahead.
If it could. So if we had a ten percent contingency in on that three hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty or three point four million, three point five. There wasn't a ten percent. In there, because now you're adding a ten percent in on the contingency. On the three point seven. I I don't take it that the company added that in. We added it in. So. Anyway, just. Surprising that it would be added in there again. That's what I'm looking at, that we ended up with the six hundred thousand. It's an accounting thing and I'll take it up with Mary Lou.
So I guess when we go through all our estimating, we estimate our unit costs. We have contingencies in there. We usually go a little higher, knowing we don't want to be under, and we don't want to have to come back to committee in the middle of a job to. Do something that gets added on. Ten percent in. Probably in this case could be a high contingency. But again, it's not like we're just going to spend it. If if we have money left at the end, you know, we'll do that through finance at the end of the year, it'll go into reserve or whatever, but. It's kind of our across-the-board number that we use typically. I would think in this job, it probably wouldn't be that, but. You don't want to ask for six and then have to come back and ask for fifty thousand dollars at the end. So that's kind of where we're. But again, it's it isn't an exact science either. You know, some of our jobs are over, some are under. Generally, we know we have to be under. We don't want to be in the hole, so.
Okay, any further questions? Call the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Don't go away, Pat. The next report is yours as well. Gray Road seven reconstruction award. Would someone care to move that for me, please? Counselor McKay, Counselor Carlton, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this is a contract that we've been working on for a while with Meford. Meford led the project because of the servicing. They've been wanting to the servicing for a while and we've had the. The super school coming in. Knowing there was going to be an increase in traffic and. All of a sudden, you're going from an elementary school to having kids and people driving, and I think more people drive than ever did to school and drop their kids off and that type of thing. So. Meford had retained a consultant. They did a lot of the heavy lifting on this as far as retaining the consultant, and then we were in on every meeting because we always pay for the road. But it turns out when we do these urbans. Typically, the extra things that come out of the contract and the very specific design details. Are usually dealing with water main and servicing. Our roadwork is generally, you know, fairly straightforward. So we found in the past where if we led these projects. All the extras and all the design changes, we're dealing with the servicing and the member municipality. So. It's our preference to to have the member municipalities lead these kind of urban redesigns. We did all the West Gray, like all, we've done ones every, every one of you in this room. So anyway, went through the design process, worked with the school board on their their traffic study and some money for the left turn lane. There there's a contribution there for some of the left turn lane work. And it's a kind of a full upgrade. We had a bunch of money in our DCs for this too. We knew. Quite a few years ago that it was kind of turning into an urban area, you know, with the kids walking and. Wanted that curb there. It's kind of an open, you know, there's an open ditch there. Which can get kind of strange on a in a in an urban area. So anyway, it went out to tender. And it's under budget by about six hundred thousand, which we're very happy with. Now, a lot of that is money savings in the DC. So when the contract comes in less. The DC reserve money we can take out is less. So it saves, I think it's two hundred fifteen in savings to levy directly. And the rest of it will just be savings. It'll stay in the DCs to do the next development charge project, so. The only other thing I wanted to mention, the construction window with July fourth to September first, trying to get away from being there when all the kids are around and buses and. People and. People parking and all that type of thing, so. It's a pretty tight window, I think. But if the majority of work could at least be done before school starts, that is definitely the goal, and we will be pushing the contractor and Meford will as well, I'm sure. To try to make sure we get it done in that window, because it isn't a huge stretch, but. We don't want to be messed around in there when the first, especially the first week of school, which is always hectic anyway, so. Anyway, we're ready to award this project to and looking forward to it being completed.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions? Counselor Apples.
We questioned a month ago on a couple of contracts whether they could get it done and whatnot and what. Penalty clause that was in there. In all of our contracts or will be that that they've got to get it finished or. Second number of dollars. Extended per day.
Yes, and I think I did have that wrong last time. My staff corrected me when I got back to the office area. It used to be a thought, sorry, my age, I guess, it was a thousand, it's two thousand a day now. So that's, you know, it's in the contractor's interest to bring in whatever iron or staff he needs to do to get it done. Because that that number gets pretty big pretty quick.
Thank you, Pat. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pat. There are no closed meeting matters. Oh, wait, we need to go back consent item six G. Which is the item regarding the Egg Advisory Committee Public Member Appointments. Counselor Matrasovs, were you willing to move that? I know you want to speak to it and seconded by Counselor DeBreen. Excellent. So Counselor Matrasovs, floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden. I appreciate this on two notes, a point of clarification, and then I would like to direct a question to all of my colleagues around the council table. I'm very pleased to see that councillor, our town of Blue Mountains councillor, Ardell has been a, is is on the list. As an apple producer representation, because we definitely need that that part of the agricultural businesses in our county represented. So I think i- in the report, it should be clarified that that councillor, Town of Blue Mountains councillor Ardell. Is is has been appointed by our council to the Blue Mountains, the Town Blue Mountains Agricultural Advisory Committee. In fact, the chair position as a council member, not as a public member. So I in this report, this this is a list of of public members who are being recommended. And I just want to make sure that we're we're clear and transparent that that councillor, that. Ms. Ardell is on the list as a public member being being an an apple producer. But when we're looking at the other column where it's organizations represented, she is in fact with her councillor hat on at that point and not as a public member. On our, the agricultural advisory committee. And therefore, my question out to my colleagues is in in view of that. I would like to ask if any of the other eight municipalities do also have an agricultural advisory committee? And is their chair on this list and is, has there been dialogue? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Scott has his hand up. Scott, you have a response. Go ahead, please.
Now it's before lunch, so I get to speak, I guess, but. Thank you for your comments and 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 questions, Counselor Matrasovs. When this application did come in. We had a chat with our clerk just to see if there was any issue there with anybody applying who who is also a municipal councillor. And and the way we viewed Ms. Ardell's application is she was applying as an apple producer, not necessarily as a municipal councillor. In 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 speaking with Tara, our clerk, she did clarify that that there was no issues here, having someone that that wore two hats. But officially, the the reason that that far right column in the report is 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 recognizing her as part of the Blue Mountains Egg Advisory Committee. Is because we had nothing to suggest that she was an official representative of Blue Mountains Council. And and furthermore, to be kind of blunt about it, we were putting her there for for her apple producer hat, not her council hat, if you will.
Uh, thank you. So follow up is, I do believe that this report should be corrected to to clarify that information. I I I I think it's very important that it's not read that Ms. Ardell is a public member on our agricultural advisory committee. She is an esteemed chair who has been appointed there as a council member. So as I, as I mentioned, I was very excited to see the name on the list and the fact that that the apple producers are going to be represented through her private. Through her personal profile, her public profile. I just think that it's important that we recognize that if if it's going to be listed as the agricultural advisory committee, that it's clarified. That she sits on that as a as an appointed council member and is in fact our chair. And then I will wait for an answer from our other municipalities if they have a similar person in mind that is either either already on this list. Or perhaps has not been. For whatever reason is not on this list.
I'm just going to stop the debate for a few minutes here. Our live stream has dropped. And staff are working at reconnecting, so we'll recess for a few moments, sorry. It's Scott's fault, probably. When we come back on stream, I'll go to Savannah. Good, we are back. Welcome back, everybody that's watching. Savannah.
Thank you so much, Warden. Just one other piece about the far right column on that report. That we wanted to kind of make clear is that any of the bolded items, those are the organizations that that individual is there representing. Any of the others are just affiliations that we wanted to be able to demonstrate this is where these members do sit or where they're a part of, but they're not speaking on behalf of that group. So I don't know if that helps at all. I just wanted to make that clear that only the bolded ones are where they're sitting with that hat on.
And the clerks department have just indicated to me that we can make that change. We don't need an amendment, but we'll make it clear that your concerns are there. Okay? Any other questions on that one? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess my question is. Is there a Apple Producers Association? And was Ms. Ardell nominated by that association? Or? From what I'm hearing, you know, she's an apple producer, but was she nominated by that association?
Scott has an answer for us, I think.
Yeah, she didn't put her name forward as as being nominated by an association in that regard. That said, we did have a few apple producers that put their names forward and in an effort to try to create balance across the county. We selected one and 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 not the other, but it wasn't, it wasn't expressed in her application form that it was formally on behalf of. X, Y, or Z organization in that regard.
So I believe we were looking for representation from the various commodity groups. To submit names, so I guess I'm wondering why the apple producers didn't submit. Or the association didn't submit. A name for consideration.
I'm not even sure if there's a local apple producers association, is there? Is there is? Okay, there is. Savannah?
Um, one of the, I guess, the notes we should have, we've got, so of the ten members, five represent agricultural groups and five represent. Sectors, one of those being. Commercial grain or fruit vegetable producers, so that's how that application came in. For Ms. Ardell was under the producer side of a sector representative, not under one of the major agricultural groups, which is listed in the first five bullets.
Does that satisfy that concern, Scott? Good, okay. Any other questions? Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you, Warden. It so by by not hearing a response, am I to assume that the town of Blue Mountains is the only. Municipality in Gray County that has an agricultural advisory committee? I was just looking that this would be an excellent opportunity for Ms. Ardell to be able to connect with others who are counterparts.
I'm gonna say that's not really pertinent to the motion, but I'm. Mr. Kentner, you have a point to make. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. If I may, and Shirley can speak to this too, but I I would just say. You know, in Meford, we would really like to have an agriculture committee. We have a large rural component and and they tend to be far-flung, you know, we we, you know, our. We extend down to the southeast and and to the northwest. So it's it's a large and diverse agricultural area. We we would probably be more interested in having representatives of the different. You know, parts of our municipality really than different commodity groups. But the big question is whether, you know, we can only do so much. In terms of priorities and we're we're just finalizing them and whether we will have an agriculture committee, I can't say, but I can say that we sure wish we had one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Any other questions regarding the motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Thank you very much. Hey, we are getting down to the short strokes here now. Other business. We. We had a resignation from the health unit due to conflicts. So we've done, we need as a council to appoint a new member. To the Gray Bruce Health Unit. Our, so so I will call for nominations. To that, Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you, Warden Millen. I would like to nominate, if willing, Counselor Carlton.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second or? Counselor Hutchinson. Any other nominations? I'll call one final time. Well, I'll ask for a motion to close nominations. Counselor Body and Counselor Greg, all those in favor? That is carried. Counselor Carlton, do you accept the nomination? Thank you very much. So we will. Put Counselor Carlton's name in the motion. Do we have a mowr yet for that? No, we do not. Some Counselor DeBreen, Counselor Echols. To all read the council of the county agree receives Counselor Bodies resignation. Regretfully. From the Gray Bruce Board of Health and that the council of the county agree appoints Counselor Carlton. To the Gray County or to the Gray Bruce Board of Health, remaining two-year term ending two thousand and twenty-four. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. One more motion. Someone care to move, we adjourn, Counselor. Oh, the clerk saying, wait a minute. My apologies. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none? Counselor Mackey. Counselor McKay, that we adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned. That's the best part of the meeting.